Morning, it's nine thirty. Let's call the committee to hold the business meeting to order. Please stand for. Now let's have the roll call. How did you like your pal's sunny? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Osman.
Here.
Commissioner Sangster.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Eustace.
Here.
Commissioner Clerman.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Thanks. Now we can stand our name. Anybody heard? So let us pray. Heavenly Father, guide us today as we discuss the affairs of the citizens of Sheboygan County. Help us to make wise decisions on their behalf for the good of all, as we pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands alone.
We're down item four on the agenda. Motion to approve it.
Chairman, if there are no dissenting motions to approve.
That is correct. We have support. Order. Yeah, motion.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace.
Yes.
Commissioner Clerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Osman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster.
Yes. Thank you. We're carried seven and all. We're down item five on the agenda. Citizens of Congress, if you want to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and we'll give you three minutes, all three minutes.
Thank you. I wrote this down for you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many committees have this opportunity to speak? My name is Tom Trice.
Hi, Tom.
Eight-five, the morning. Eight-five, eight-three, Cordwood Trail, Sheboygan County. And I'd like to address short-term rentals, or VRBOs, Airbnbs, you know them. Short-term rental properties are becoming a serious issue in Sheboygan County, as well as the state of Michigan. They're proliferating as summer homes go up for sale and are purchased by LLCs, developers, and folks looking to make a for-profit business out of renting the properties for a week or a weekend to make a significant sum. Our Lord in Michigan paradise. The majority of these businesses, business properties, are located within residentially built neighborhoods and are creating issues for the full-time residents that are being, that need to be addressed. These short-term rentals are not registered with any agency. They are not licensed, not a licensed business within the county. They are not being inspected for safety as rental properties. They are not regulated by any government agency. And these items need to be addressed. We live in Cordwood Point, a member association. It's a beautiful lakeside community. And within this small division, subdivision, we have between fifteen and thirty short-term rentals. We don't know how many right now either. At the beginning of the week, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, cars begin showing up these nights. They come with trailers of wave runners, four-wheelers, motorcycles, snowmobiles. They park wherever they can and they begin the daily trek up and down our roads, creating noises, disturbing and tranquil setting, we've come to know. They have their bonfires, leaving them untended. They become loud through the day and the night. They have their midnight swims. The fireworks go off at wee hours of the morning. Their dogs bark and are often not unleashed. And these animals are confronting residents within the community. On Sundays, they pack up and go home. They leave the smelly trash out at the street that attracts the insects and the animals. And that trash should be picked up three or four days later. And then it starts all over again following the week. These are profit-making businesses operating in a residential area. There are no regulations, there's safety inspections. The county has no idea how large this issue is because they are not required to register or get a license to do business in the county. They are being taxed as a single-family residence. Many communities are addressing this by eliminating these enterprises in residentially zoned areas. The cities of Sheboygan and St. Ignis, and last night I heard the city of Cadillac, that most recently addressed these issues. We are asking the county of Sheboygan to address this issue by eliminating short-term rentals in residentially zoned areas, which is currently allowed under ordinance two hundred, county ordinance two hundred. Please take action to remove these businesses from our neighborhoods and allow us to get back to the peace and tranquility we have enjoyed in northern Michigan, Sheboygan County. We do not want our member association to become a resort community. Thank you for your attention, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Teresa Veronar, eighty-five, eighty-three, Cordwood Trail.
Hi, Tom.
I just, good morning. With support of the elimination of short-term rentals in residential areas, I'm hoping the county can look into it in past county ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Renee Powers. I live on one-one-three-four Shore Drive, Holiday Subdivision. And for about two months, the neighbor, the neighbor's residence has been turned into an Airbnb. And I have frequently seen some, a lot of, a lot of trespassing. And the worst thing was, on the nineteenth, Tuesday night, I had to call the state police because I was, I live alone and at nighttime I got into bed and once I thought I was going to go to sleep, I heard some voices outside my window and I saw a flashlight going up and down. So it was like that close to the window. And I got down on the floor. I was afraid and I still kind of shaking from the whole thing. I got down on the floor and I just crawled around the other side of the room and I called the police. And the dispatcher stayed with me on the phone. And then they, they showed up about ten minutes later and they went out, searched property, didn't find anyone. But then I told them the neighbors, well, they weren't really neighbors, I told them that turned into an Airbnb. And I really don't see any, too much, too much activity other than at nighttime, but a few times I have seen things in the daytime that are like strange people that are meeting there, and they aren't even families. So they're introducing each other on the beach. I'm getting out of work, I'm sitting on my swing. So this goes into a whole different, a whole different neighborhood. And the police, they went in to talk to them and they said that the neighbor, the host, the owner, said that they could go out and look for firewood in the woods, in the woods, which is right between their house and mine, which is not that far. It's a little bit maybe out to the hallway there. And so that's what they, firewood. And so it's just lucky for Andy, ever since they've been looking, you know, that, there's a police report about that. And I, I can't believe that they would come that far to break my bedroom window and have a flashlight like that. But that's what happened. And so that was, I've seen other things where they, their dogs have been running right over into, running the beach and coming right up onto where I am and then chasing them down. And but I think the worst was that. And I just, I would really like to see this come to an end. If I, if I would have known, I wouldn't have purchased the property. If I would have known, I would have to experience something like this. And so I guess it was their children. I don't call them children. I, I think they were teenagers, but they, they, the parents told them they could do that too. So it was both.
Where do you, where do you live?
I live on, it's a shore drive right on Lake Huron, Holiday Subdivision.
Holiday.
Holiday, yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Ron Ford.
Hi, Ron.
I'm the president of the Holiday Subdivision Association. I have a handle. I'll just do that, just speak if I can, just hand those around if you could. Primarily, I'm here to ask for help in eliminating short-term rentals. We have been subject to many of the same things that happens in Cordwood. I guess from my past experience as a chair of a county in the upper peninsula, this issue is a, is a problem. Essentially, I would look at it from your aspect, if really we have small hotels being rented out nightly with no resident manager watching what's going on. That's essentially what's happening. Some of these are three, four-bedroom homes, so it would be a four-unit motel, or in this case, we have two adjacent to one another. So it's like an eight-unit motel, just do what they want. We do have association bylaws and we do have deed restrictions and covenants. But we are well aware that corporations buy these with the bet that small associations don't have the financial power to take them to court. That's, that's the name of the game in final scene. So I would ask that somehow, because many communities, as Cordwood has said, and as one of our association members, many communities are addressing this in some fashion. I would hope that maybe you would take it upon yourself, try to find a way to turn some of these tranquil subdivisions, communities, and residential places back to where they were in elimination of small hotels and rentals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's your name, Ed? Kathy Morrow. Good morning, Commissioner, staff, and the public. My name's Kathy Morrow. I'm a resident Holiday Subdivision Association, Moogran Estates. I am here today to ask the Board of Commissioners for direction and/or guidance regarding the possibility of a planning commission revisiting zoning ordinance number one-four-seven, short-term rentals. Currently, the ordinance states short-term rentals shall be permitted uses in all zoning districts. I am asking that platted residential deed restriction subdivisions be excluded from this ordinance, such as Holiday Subdivision Association and others if they so choose. When we purchased our home forty-eight years ago, we knew it was a residential subdivision association with rules and regulations. Our deed even states, subject to restrictions, reservations, easements, if any, of record. These rental homes have different individuals, multi-families, in there every couple of days. Not all, but most of their actions are very disrespectful to our full-time residents who live next to them, as well as within the subdivision. I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker and I get nervous. Our articles of the Corporation State goes blah, 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 and then it says, "To establish and maintain an association for social and home improvement basis to be organized and operated for property improvement purposes, pleasure, recreation, and other non-profitable purposes. And no part of the net earning shall inure to the benefit of any private shareholder." Does that include Airbnbs? Non-profitable, wouldn't that include, like I said, short-term rentals and Airbnbs? Once again, I am asking that the planning commission revisit zoning ordinance number one-four-seven to exclude platted residential subdivisions who have restrictions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy.
My name is Scott Kelly. I live at thirteen-eighty-three Nicolay Drive, Moogran Estates, Moogran Township. I'm here to speak along the same lines as everybody else, and I can reiterate everything that they're saying in terms of the disruptions and things like that. I can go a little bit further. We have bylaws that states cannot have short-term rentals in our subdivision. There is a company that came in and bought a rather large home in our area. They advertised it as being rented to, they could hold up to twelve people. We have sent registered letters to this individual. They will not accept them and send them back to us. Amazingly, they actually will take our, our normal information and send their fees and stuff like that. They will not accept a registered letter to inform them about this. This rental, on three occasions this year, has had plumbing issues. And there have been plumbers there for anywhere from eight to ten hours or two, three hours. The trash situation, I walk every day, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday this week, the trash is sitting out by the road. There are five garbage cans there at which the animals tend to get to them and things like that. I, again, I can reiterate all the stuff about the traffic, the noise, those types of things. But in addition to that, there's the safety and the wear and tear on the roads. There is the issue of the septic systems, can they handle that? And on top of that, our bylaws specifically states that you cannot have short-term rentals. Our difficulty is our association fees are not enough to cover being able to take somebody to court. And we need help from both the township and the county to come up with some type of enforcement, some type of guidelines to, to make these people follow. And so, again, we're hoping and we're looking for guidance and help from you to be able to enforce some things with these Airbnbs, these short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'm Brian Collins.
Brian.
Eight-three fifty-one, Cordwood Trail. I'm the president of Cordwood Trail. And again, reiterating what everyone else has to say, I, my main concern also was septic systems because the majority of where all our Airbnbs are starting to show up are on the waterfront. And when you start overloading septic systems, now you're starting to mess with potential pollution of the lake because, again, these houses, you know, they have parties of ten, fifteen, sometimes twenty people, and the house is designed, what? Five, six people max. And then when you overload those systems, how long does it take before that system fails? And when you've got a full waterfront of nothing but Airbnbs, that, that's a potential right there in itself to create a lot of problems, just for water quality. So it's not just, you know, the issues of the noise. We're talking the environment here, so. And again, back to what they're all saying, the peace and tranquility of our neighborhoods. I mean, we, we buy for the peace and serenity, but we're trading that now for, what? Nothing? I mean, we're getting, we're now in a higher more security, you know, put cameras up on our houses, things like that. And we're having the speeders. I mean, it's constant. They, they roll in like they were saying on Monday and leave Sunday, but every day in between, when they're going to town, they're speeding down our neighborhoods. And most of our neighborhoods are elderly and children walking the neighborhoods, and it's the grandchildren of elderly. They don't move too fast. That's all I got.
Brad?
So, this is the morning. This was brought to my attention yesterday, so I didn't have a lot of time to do any research or take your information. However, a couple of things that I was able to learn is, right now with current system we have with CAT, there's no way to track an Airbnb versus a property owned by Mr. Balance. So I can't separate complaints for you. What I can tell you is that complaints like this have increased. Most of it have to do with traffic, trash, noise, and fireworks. So quickly, I guess, just to throw a little different perspective on this, is I don't know what it takes to zone an Airbnb, right? That's, that's, that's Mike's thing and your thing. But I do know that there are certain laws that, that in ordinances that you can implement, that you have the right to implement right now in regards to fireworks. Sheboygan County just has not done that. You have the right to, most of our complaints are fireworks, noise, speeders. You can also do some noise ordinances, which will give us, you know, a little bit of teeth for something that we can do. Or right now, there's nothing, fireworks are legal, right? There's not a noise ordinance. So when we get the calls from, from folks like this that live in these residential areas, we, of course, respond. We talk to the people. But we have no way to track that right now. We will with Hexagon, correct Lieutenant? So once Hexagon, you're all familiar with the new Hexagon project. And once that comes into effect, we will be able to track that property by property, by owner, by Airbnb. All of that is incorporated through the county property records. Right now, there's not a way for me to pull that down. We, of course, I believe someone mentioned the state police had to respond. So I checked into that after I bonged out a vote. Our car was Wolverine. We had one car on that night, they were Wolverine. The state police car was at Kama County. So you said ten minutes, ma'am? It looks like it was closer to like twenty-three minutes that it took them to get there because they came from Kama County. So our car was tied up and I could find it over. So.
It was trespassing.
Yes, yeah. Which, again, is issues with the trespassing and a lot of it may be unintentional, people walking down the beach that don't realize, now you're standing in front of some of this house. And that homeowner may not appreciate that. But so from our perspective, it has increased our workload, the Airbnbs have. But I can't give you like a number right now because I have no way to track that, no way to pull that information from central dispatch. So. The, the noise ordinances and the fireworks ordinances that you have the authority right now to enact, you may or may not help in this decision, obviously, for you as a board. If you choose to enact them, we'll certainly do anything we can to help enforce them. If you choose not to, then we'll continue doing as the law was done. So talk to the people and say, hey, listen, you've got some neighbors here. Maybe you can wait till tomorrow night at dusk to light the fireworks instead of doing the two-way. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Ellen Thompson.
Ellen.
Hi. Grant Township, and I'm here to discuss the eight-hundred-and-ten acres of solar panels that have just been approved. And, you know, I can really appreciate everyone talking about the VRBOs and what they're dealing with. But what we're dealing with now is having eight-hundred-and-ten acres of toxic solar panels that are going to be all over our area that is going to be pollution in the lakes and the streams that does affect our peace and surrounding in that area. It's pulling people out of their homes because of the battery situation and the pacemaker that one lady that she's surrounded by. I've, I've gone to the planning commission meetings and I have asked the question how agricultural acres can be changed to industrial like that? You know, how three landowners can affect the entire community and what we're dealing with. And then at the latest planning commission meeting, there was a lengthy discussion on they can even enforce these, all these special use permits, you know, that this, this project is supposed to have all these trees planted and all this stuff for wildlife, what they claimed, and there's no enforcing. And, and that the light is an issue. What, what is looking out your window and looking at eight-hundred-and-ten acres of solar panels? And it's in, and I find out that our community gets zero benefit from any of this electricity. It's, it's an abomination and it's just, it's a land grab and it's just, it just makes me sick to, to know that this is happening in northern Michigan. And the snow, I mean, the, you know, the, the ice storm, who's going to take care of all the, when they're, because they, they have a life span. You know, what's going to happen then if we can't even enforce any of the issues right now that the county's dealing with? And now we just allowed this to happen? I, I don't know. I, it's just, it's really, really disheartening. And I just would like to know how the county's going to deal with that, the responsibility to monitor this and make sure that the trees to cover this up are planted and, and just to stop, just, just to say no to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
John Stewart, Sheboygan County, kind of wanted to reiterate, think, think Donna was talking about, and I'm kind of planning and zoning. And up until last week, when six members of the board approved the special, well, it wasn't, there was supposed to be a special use permit until that evening, then our attorney told us it's an application permit. So basically, it's permitted by right use somehow. So we were told we had to go along with it and, and basically jump in line and say yes. So six of the board members voted yes, I voted no. I'm all about personal property rights, but when something negatively impacts the community and us neighbors, we have to stop that. We can't just allow this. We have to somehow come up with some kind of local control and, and put it back in our hands so that you can actually say no to this stuff. So, thanks.
Thank you, John.
Louis Bowns, Grant Township, City of Sheboygan. What recently happened, nine and ten years ago? Our governor appealing this FEMA rejection from our, from the federal government for individual and utility assistance for the individuals and utility beneficiaries. The county got their money, the sheriff got their money, emergency manager got their money from the ice storm. But us, us individuals are getting denied insurance coverage from, from our insurance companies. And I'll shame one right now with auto owners. Maybe they're a piece of crap. They should not even be in business. They are, they have wronged two other prominent business people in this town. Ray Loughran, the Loughran family, as well as Wayne Duffy. They wronged him. They are wronging us as well. They had this, I'm from the government, I'm here to help you loan, shark, extortion scheme, a small business insurancing, which should not have even been able to come into this God-precient county and do this extortion scheme when FEMA gives you direct assistance. We should not have ever allowed the SVA to come into this county and extort us for our information, data mining our information to get any assistance to properties and to help us. I mean, you know, the county is sitting on sixty million dollars supposedly at the slush fund. I'm asking the county, open its pocketbooks right now and help the people in this community, in this county that needs it. I mean, you know, he's sitting on sixty million dollars boasting about it. Our treasurer says, oh, we got to have a sixty million dollar cushion in our county. Well, you know what? That's a rainy day fund. If you want me. Our people in our county need assistance. I mean, our family right now has well over almost a hundred fifty thousand dollars of damage because of the ice storm. And what are we going to do, Lord? You guys got your money. The county got its grants, they got its, you know, thing, the OEM and sheriff boasted about getting their money from federal government, at least, but, but those advertised. I mean, it could be different, but that's, that's why I'm going by what's been advertised. Governments got their money. Law enforcement got the money. The waters of people. Where are we in this? We're paying, we're paying taxes into the county. We're paying taxes into the government. And we have our rep, Kim Cabot, silent on this. John Moose issued a limb request to the, a statement, a pope. John Moose issued a limb request to the, uh, uh, statement, uh, a pope, uh, supporting Whitmer's thing there. Uh, but where does, uh, where's the county government in this? Where's our county, uh, uh, leaders here? Where is your statement on this? Sitting there, um, you know, silent. We, you are our leaders. We expect you to lead us. We expect the leadership from you. We expect you to start to sit there and, uh, you know, and be timekeepers. And we expect you to make statements to our, our state and federal lawmakers that you want our tax money. Then you're gonna return our tax money to us. And we are gonna get, uh, our share of that, uh, of that pot. Either you.
Three minutes.
Well, like I said, you guys got sixty million, sixty million dollars per puppy.
Board attorney.
Well, we expect the name, we expect you to, uh, respond.
Hey, hey. Sorry, John Stewart, again, look back. I'm glad Louis used the word extortion. Because in my opinion, these solar developers that come in and hold this grant money over the townships and the county, they're doing nothing but extorting us into going along with their projects. That was it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, board, let's move on. Human resource.
Morning.
Morning.
So this is the, I'm the director of human resources for Chippewa County. This is the twenty twenty four overview of my actions in my department this past year. Seems like it's almost gonna be twenty twenty six here. Uh, but in twenty twenty four, um, we're assisted in council leaders with concerns and issues in their department. Um, assisted many, uh, employees with benefit questions and concerns. Um, along with the successful, but a little bit more challenging open enrollment this past, yeah, twenty twenty four. Uh, due to the increased rates and the additional education that we needed to provide to the staff. Um, assisted department heads and elected officials in hiring staff. The county hired, uh, seventeen employees during twenty twenty four. That does include some seasonal staff that we do each year. Um, completed and conducted numerous wage surveys, uh, related to union negotiations, as well as requests from other counties that, um, we receive. Um, I send out monthly emails promoting our employee assistance program and helping habits and have shared webinars that are available, um, to employees that are free. Process thirteen retirements slash resignations. Passes two former employees that were on Cobra and we had ten FMLAs in the year of twenty twenty four. I started and participated in union, union negotiations with ASME and the FOP. Continue the monthly employee spotlight. Uh, this is where an employee randomly selected each month and basically gets to know that employee and send out emails to employees in their picture. Uh, we had about eleven engagement activities in twenty twenty four. Uh, other offices are also getting involved to sponsor that. Relating to these already getting involved and having that few minutes to, uh, talk and chat with people. Uh, these activities and events are all employee paid, so people are just volunteering food and time. Kind of county funds are used. Um, I continue to send out new hire emails, um, for new employees. A lot of time they have new hires and they don't mind, you might not see them, um, whether it's in the sheriff's department, they, they're not around the building as much or a different department. Um, you know, take a picture of them, tell them a little bit about people so that if they, if they do see them, they can say hi, welcome. Um, that's pretty much my own review of twenty twenty four. Anything I question?
Question.
I do like them. Co-founder. You know, the soy, soy stuff is.
Right. Well, it's hard to, you know, but our office will be much.
Hi, Greg. Chuck. Um, if you're part-time, the, um, ammo support, the ammo support is very, very high. That's another, another plus.
That's good news.
We're down to the administrators before ninety-seven. Be on a couple items. Uh, first, FEMA funding. Uh, staff has met with, uh, FEMA here in the last two weeks. Uh, we gave a homepage on how unions can apply for reimbursements. Uh, right now it is open on just municipal units. Uh, there is an appeal in for a public utility funding, uh, which the state has, uh, placed in. We have a very, interesting back. Uh, so for Chippewa County, uh, specifically, we have overtime for law enforcement and equipment costs. Uh, overtime is roughly around forty thousand dollars for the event. Uh, our largest cost, uh, is the review of debris removal. Uh, we had ten sites located within the county, uh, that had pretty and the estimated costs, if we, uh, chip every site, it would be around thirty to four thousand dollars. Uh, so we have to look, uh, with the road commission to determine which sites, uh, need to be chipped. Uh, what sites if we stay, stay in place there. Uh, there isn't any guarantee from, from FEMA that reimbursement for debris management will come back. So we'll have to make that, uh, business decision with the, uh, road commission on what we can process. Uh, I'm expecting it back in the future. A, a couple other projects, uh, for the Dog Bird project, the, um, the dedication for that is scheduled for October eleventh at one AM. Uh, so the fence is up. We hope to have the adventures installed by that time period. Uh, landscaping will be dependent on, uh, when we can plant the trees and everything. So we they'll die if we plant them here in the fall. And in the long term, we're looking to build a feed, really, uh, continue to enable the funding from donations. Uh, for generator projects, the generator is scheduled to be here tomorrow and with the installation scheduled to this weekend. Hopefully, uh, any issues on the transfer switches. And, um, we'll be, um, fully integrated hopefully here then on your Tuesday. So in an event if we lose full power, uh, then the building here will have, uh, power run all systems moving forward. Do you have any questions? October eleventh, uh, eleven AM.
That is so everybody God is coming, right?
Jeff, I do a big question that I mentioned. In reference to the degree, if the state does not approve each of these, then what is the go-forward plan? Just.
Well, this would be FEMA reimbursement. The, the state, we have to talk to, like, whatever means, debris there. Um, because it's standard material, it, it has to make a little, if it's even in place. They had an old gravel pit there, but it's been placed. That'd be the long-term question, state's perspective. If they tell us we have to chip it from I can follow where the cost may or may not be.
Thank you. You're on the state land and county can be on a town there. Any other questions, James? The whole business, we're down to new business, item nine, resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve. That takes three of them like that.
This is resolution twenty five twelve, uh, authorizing entry participation agreements, partial settlement and national shipping obligation litigation. This is where the, uh, the Pharma settlement. So there's estimated settlement amount of under ninety-four thousand three hundred and seventy dollars for a county recommendation from legal counsel as to prove the resolution.
It's your pleasure, board. The long-term need.
I'll make the motion quick for you.
I support.
Support. Permanent question? Adam Moore.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, board. That's carried seven dollars down the reservation, twenty five dash thirteen, another one that's so generic.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion on twenty five dash thirteen.
Sergeant. Who's supported?
I am.
Thank you, Dale. Adam Clark.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Thank you, board. That's carried seventy dollars down the, nine C body armor and outer carrier purchase. That's down on the right end. So that's for sheriff's department.
The sheriff's office is, um, requesting authorization purchases, um, twenty-three soft ride armor and outer carriers, including ID panels. Commissioner Claremont, mobile energy, I don't. Um, this was budgeted when we did the twenty-five budgets. Um, we had been waiting to do it because normally the, there's federal grants that will pay, uh, reimburse up to fifty percent. The federal, for whatever reason, has not issued that yet and, um, we're getting to the kind of like or the end of the warranty of the vest that they currently have. So they're requesting that the, um, commissioners make a motion to approve the purchase of the bar, body armor and outer carriers from full tax supply in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars. If the grant funding comes through up to fifty percent, or I think it's twelve hundred dollars per vest, so it's up to, um, I think thirteen thousand eight hundred. That was a real high online. I didn't realize it was a limit for vest, so I apologize for that. And I don't know if Sheriff Russ has anything he wanted to add?
No, ma'am. You've covered it. It's, uh, as Commissioner Claremont, Sheriff Neil, you know, best lifestyle. So the only reason I haven't heard them yet is as Sue mentioned, um, we were hoping the grant would open up and we'd be able to apply for that. If it's not reimbursed right away, it doesn't matter. It's happened at federal level. The grant is still closed. They haven't listed on the website, but they're not taking applications and it's not set up right now. Jody at our office, Lieutenant Tibo and Sue are all on the email chain from the feds for the grant. If that opens, we'll know right away. As of now, it has to happen. So we'd like to move forward with, uh, replacing them before they're expulsed. Thank you.
And Sheriff, any questions? No. By the head, I'm not being removed. So. Yes.
And no, Sue is a lot better at this than I am. So historically, if you bought them prior to applying for the grant, you were not eligible for the reimbursement. So right now, because they opened the grant but not allocated the money, they're saying that that stipulation may be waived. But there's nothing, you, you guys know how that works just as well as I.
And the, and an email, I believe, Joey sent to the agency, as long as you didn't purchase them before April one of the current year, they, they would allow you to go back. However, the state, their federal grant ends September thirtieth. And from the research I'm doing, this is a continuing resolution ish. The federal government, they are running on a continuing resolution, so they have not adopted a budget for this department. Um, from what I'm reading and historically, when this has happened, they have allowed you to go back a year to get it. But the federal government, I can't tell you, I don't want our guys without the, my recommendations.
Okay, man.
And Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Lord, when you got the we have to be a person, we, if that be the subject, I'll make.
Any further discussion? Thank you.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Thank you. That's carrying seven dollars. DHHS homemade position contract.
This is a continuation of our homemaker agreement that G and B thus. Cost is fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-five percent of it comes back, which helps your funding. Remaining twenty-five percent of that. Right in the data show was approved via DHHS agreement. You have A twenty-six, sixteen, zero, zero, one, the homey, homeowners condition authorized ministry sign.
Any discussion, questions? Adam Moore.
I'll make the motion. House board.
Thank you. Home is supported. Go for it.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Thank you, board. That's very similar. County administrator contract, engine. That's twenty-six on your iPad. Remember we did the evaluation?
Mr. Chair, I'm probably getting motion that the, the version, because I love for good language. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Not yet. Sam Moore.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Seven oh oh, we have. Uh, we're down to ten board management discussion. Renewable, the third is new ending. Yeah, I'll jump in there. Write the boards and information here on some. So as we've heard here, we're on the planning mission.
He can approve one of our preo ordinance of solar. So to go back a little bit, as far as explaining the state of Michigan approvals for solar projects or wind projects. Uh, the state allows communities to, uh, approve an ordinance to review. Uh, but a community is required to have either an ordinance that will permit it in some location under certain conditions, which would be special use permit conditions for an applicant and apply directly to the state of Michigan and public service mission for approval. So Chippewa County has had renewable energy, uh, ordinances for several years. Our, our preo was updated within the last couple of years, uh, to basically address the change by the legislature on the approval process. Uh, so we've had a developer, uh, that came back for reapproval under that program and did receive that. Uh, so the state of, state of Michigan have a program that prevents communities that approve either wind, solar, or other renewables to apply to the state of Michigan for funding, um, and the whole community also can do that. So our understanding, uh, we didn't hear back from the program administrators, what funding is last. Last year, we were told it was about nine hundred thousand dollars left in that fund applied for. On the program, the project they have within the county would prevent the county to apply up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars according to township, similar if there's un-funding, uh, left. So with the discussion of the planning commission and also from the public here, uh, this is available to brought this to the board to provide information, allow the, the commission to hear what's out there, uh, have to try to answer a question and get some guidance if they want to be forward. But why, uh, obviously check back with the state, see if it's sending funding there in the long run, um, but we also you want to make sure that they understood the approval process that's here and what's available so we can have a good review and discussion of this.
I have a question, Chairman.
Sure.
Where do we get this funding? What, what the county's partners are using these ways?
And if under any restrictions?
Uh, can be used for municipal projects, um, infrastructure, building rights, improvements.
Could it be used to rewrite the ordinance that includes the solar channels?
Probably, yes.
You know, we could hire a professional. Organization and other types of solar panel ordinances throughout the country, I guess. That's.
Yeah, we have done that when we've established ours and it went back for legal review based on what the changing of the state. Or, or we spent quite a bit of time. Putting ours together, so we could use funds for that. And I don't, I don't know if the model specific here has been more changed based on it. We have a couple of different types of ordinances that you can. Do here in Michigan, but the bottom line is if the. If the dollar wants to go around the communities, they can still do that under the legislation. So, currently, I find that. The state three N's.
It's not good.
Other words, getting what the board deal with the state favor. Mr. Chairman. At the last planning permission, it seemed like they are needing order that way, maybe rewriting that. Ordinance and the civil council was there and gave a pretty good talk. And she said that it could be solar companies that do not want to go to the state. They're trying to do everything to avoid one of their state. Well, she said it's so difficult that the first one that went, they have such a hard time that they don't, they don't want to go there anymore. So, if you even make a local ordinance that's a little tougher than the state, not have a preo. They will, they will even do what's a little tougher than go to the state. She gave some statistics. No one in her, nobody in all the solar fields that she represents have gone with state. You just don't want to go to state. It's just too difficult. So, you can maybe make a local ordinance that's a little tougher. Currently, that's what her, that's what she means. Am I right on that?
Yes.
So. I'm saying that's good. Yeah, so I think they're leading towards redoing that, yeah. Planning. The plan, yeah. That was very interesting news from the civil. Yeah. Thank you.
Sheriff America. I've been to several meetings on this and the overwhelming consensus is the citizens that we represent do not want this. And my concern with something like this, with the county applying for something like this that gives the appearance of a green lady, a project that our constituents do not want.
Absolutely.
And although I, I get the, if you don't fly, you don't get. But at the same time, at some point, I think we need to stand up and say, we don't want this.
You got a million fly. But it's, it's true. We don't, you know, the public does want them. We're representing the public.
That's my plan.
I'm, Sheriff, I'm, Sheriff, just some word on the universal from the fire help us. And from my aspect, their question is, what are you going to do for all the additional traffic? How's the Sheriff's Department going to enforce all the additional traffic? The road commission has contacted us on, know about all the additional wear and tear on the roads and how that's going to work. What we were going to be able to do for traffic control, speed enforcement, all that kind of thing during the construction phase, obviously, of the projects. And as you know, like we talked about with the Airbnb's, we're getting a lot more requests and a lot more demands with the same over resources. My answer to them has been that we will do whatever we can. If there's an issue once it starts, then let me know and we'll try and help. So, that's also a concern, Commissioner Claremont, that I'm sure have been brought to you too, as you've had to these, is, is the the amount of resources that are brought into the area for the construction portion of it and how that affects all of the county residents. For what it's worth, I've gotten a lot of. Thank you, negative impact. I have questions also.
Good input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, you have a full minutes. Hold this.
Sure. How long do you want to table it for? Be statutory and you can table it thirty days.
Or was, or was she not doing it? Would you accept that?
Yeah. Your motion, your motion would be not to.
Not to apply.
Not to apply for the grant, but I would support that.
The over is determined. And the dumb machine, not apply.
If I can hear some words.
I'd like to make a most minimal, we do not apply some renewable ready.
Thank you. Your support is. I would force that. Inverted topic discussion. That I would give you a question.
Commissioner Russ made a comment that. The solar involved in this, not want to go to the state. Can you share any more as to what the logic of that might be?
The civil council, she said that the first company that wasn't in her law firm that went there had such a hard time. The message was, don't go to state. That's all she said.
We sit here with, with this, you did from the state that thou shall in this situation, but yet no one wants to go to this state.
Right, yeah, and it was, yeah, it was kind of counterintuitive.
Yeah. The other script, you know, another comment that I heard is that we were looking at re, re-taking another look at our solar system. Recognizing this, Commissioner Claremont, is spot on with where the public defending stands on this matter. Would it not be an appropriate time to consider just eliminating our solar ordinance and taking a position of Chippewa County supports the Farm Bureau's position in this? And if you research the thirteen-page document that the Farm Bureau put out, it's all the common sense in the world why that you're not happy, particularly in this type of thing. And you, this kind of a community is rural and. Sure, when they, just, uh, expand upon that. I too spoke with civil council, and one of the issues about going to the state is the civil pieces that are taking this out so far in the future. And it wasn't so much that they didn't want to go to state, they didn't want to fight the civil suits.
Want to be in court all the time.
Right. And so, but I totally agree with Commissioner Warfield that maybe we ought to look at eliminating the county ordinance on solar. I think that is the will of our constituents, and I agree with you completely, sir. I think that I can certainly speak for my constituency. That's overwhelmingly opposed to the idea. If we take a position of eliminating the ordinance, I think it takes a target off the back and let it go somewhere else. Another town. Where it's been made sense, certainly doesn't have a top.
Remember the planning commissioner, John, you had a comment?
I just wanted to say that because this myth is approved through the county, when this fails and there's no money left, it's on the county. It's our responsibility, not the state's, not the county's. It will be on the county.
How do you mean cling what up?
Is it solar project? When they go down. It's out of money?
Oh, I see.
It'll be on the county.
Or just have destruction or like.
So, that's what I have civil council here. That was one of the questions that I did ask. And the answer I got was the company have to be bonding. But if you look out in the desert in the United States where the solar farm, they also were bonding, but they're setting in rusty. So, in a desert.
I still don't work in a desert.
Right. What? That is a motion and some other.
Thank you, I'm in discussion.
I just want to speak to the most, just so.
If the party knows that if the grant township and the county applied us five hundred thousand dollars.
Potentially.
Potentially. And there's only nine hundred thousand in block to the fund. And we don't know, so we don't know how many people are ahead of us. So, the likelihood of getting that money is very, very small. I mean, there's these solar bills going up all over and you've built yet. So. I mean, you, you, we are expecting to get half of, over half of that money. I just don't think it's going to be. We have a call from the vote. Or do you have, why don't we have the most in, in written? So, it's the same thing. Spot on.
I have a question, Chairman. What is the deadline?
No deadline, only.
It's at the state level.
Regarding, that's a little bit off on the, thinking that Chippewa County is going to get a piece of that. It's kind of a stretch. Way it looks, yeah. That's probably. That's your question. We only did funding projects. That's start construction to receive fifty percent in the past. We shouldn't be just table this.
I'm comfortable with that going. If you begin, this is just opinion on. Commissioner Claremont said it gives it the, it gives it the presence that we got. Any money, that we support that, and it's very clear the people I talk to don't support it. It's in his constituency, so I mean, I'd like to support him, but it's not.
So, just be tabled. Do we have an appropriate motion rejecting? Is that all right?
Because you're, you want for the reasoning of table in this thirty days to get proper.
Yeah, to get their proper wording in there by civil council, so that we. Proceeding on.
As we.
To reject this.
As we get through this thirty days, is it appropriate to look at at the same time? Increasing the volume of our message by attracting our solar zone and ordnance in its entirety.
Yes.
And include, and include that into the motion. So, there's a thirty day, one, one piece of business instead of two or three. To get to where I think we all know where we would be on this. And if there's any question about that, you don't have to look any further than our neighbors about Seago County. Yeah, if that's the case, I would live on. Sorry, is that again, please?
Not just to say no to the grant, but also look at removing our existing solar ordinance and its entirety so as to no longer have a target on our back and view this as one piece of business. And then just saying no to the grant and then having you come back and you'll begin at what it would take to resolve the ordinance and this, and this here right now.
What I would have asked there is with the ability to talk to the council, survive the board with the memo of, of the. You can certainly do that, but Leo Council should write the guidance where the options are and what the ramifications. I mean, that's kind of what I was getting.
She'll be here next week.
Yes. Well, he'll talk to her before then.
Sure, yeah. Mr. Chairman, so lift that. I would withdraw that and then the motion to table this for thirty days until we get proper rework. It's a responsibility.
Thank you.
She's supporting that.
I would draw my support. And then, Adam Clark?
Please. To table this for thirty days. So.
Motion and data.
Motion. Order. Okay. Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Very seven oh oh. Thank you for all the discussion. Thank you for. The board's going to go into a closed session.
Sure. Yeah, very, which is for management discussion. I'd like to bring up a few issues.
Oh, rather than.
Put it on. Yeah. Rather than putting it down there because I think you could.
Okay, so the public can leave if they want.
Right. All right, you, under board members for discussion, I really wanted to have some discussion on these short-term rentals and directed towards our administrator. I'll give you the correction. You can go. I have a discussion with him on this. But I totally support of, of leaning away with these short-term rentals. And I think we need to take whatever actions necessary at the county level so that we can do what needs to be done to eliminate.
Which is a whole other living nation, civil council.
But it's just going to grow.
Yeah.
People who are suffering now, you can help them if you do get something, play in a place to stop that. And I really look to the administrator. I know the city's done that. I know that the discussion is requiring at the township level. But as I've touched the conversation we had, so myself, the board, the amendment to public. Where would you go with this and what correction?
Board wants to set up a research file and put together a report. And.
That's just, you know, I'll do that. Could just, let this comment to that when the parent wanted to call, he said he didn't. Like it. After the lot of issues that the lawyers that does hold this work. But it's well spoken, but as stated like it, I mean, there's ways that are really reasonable without just pulling a pen on the whole thing. You know, platted to something that's an easy fix to not allow short-term. I would like to make sure cautiously move forward on this.
Well, that's not even an easy fix, so Rich, because.
Well, I shouldn't say easy fix. That's makes it.
With the subdivision restriction.
Right, or it just makes us as a county, makes a good place to start. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, gotcha.
And, you know, just to come out with a blanket ban on it, I think is, just because unfortunately, we don't have the resources for lodging for people to come here. Most are, you know, in the winter months, there's not even like sixty hotel rooms available in the county. Well, I mean, Macau City are a few, but that's me. I just want to make sure that we don't.
Jump to go.
Right, but we definitely need to take care of it in the, and they're all legitimate concerns that everybody had here today. It needs to be addressed. I just want, that's just my comment on that.
How's that?
Conception.
Is that comment? Yeah. Okay, go ahead. Just to bounce back, Commissioner Sangster. Is what you're, if it was new, Rich, and applied in subdivision. Then we can start there.
Right.
It addresses these folks' concerns. It's the first step into the pool. And we can kind of see from there where we go.
That's what I.
If we want to expand, we got different areas that, you know.
I got three. Because there are other places. And some areas that semi-commercial there, you know.
Yeah.
You know, not to do that, like to people on Main Street. I have one right across the street, you know, it's appropriate there. You know, I mean, it's just an apartment, you know.
Oh, we have, we have that now, but subdivision, subdivision.
Right, but they're being, they just didn't fight that. Right, like just, just like this.
Kind of another issue of the planning mission, I think it was, it was quite a. Discussion about enforcement. And I guess they're big kind of, so you have some of their feelings. They, their comment was the planning commission has asked numerous times for help from the board of commissioners, and they just don't feel like they're giving any help on enforcement. That seems to be overwhelming. I heard that again today. Yeah, yeah, I mean, overwhelming, it sounds just that they just aren't getting help from us. And I guess, you know, that, that, you know, that. What can we do to help them? And I guess that needs to be addressed, but they, they just seem to operate very. Maybe we ought to address it, right? Well, that's the. So, you want to comment on that?
Yes. I may have. The administrator come up with some ideas, some ideas, always thought that, you know, we got to be. Looking into the portfolio of tails. There's been discussion, there's been a long reasoning why we haven't.
Right.
And now may be the time to get that. That's I think we should.
I mean, no big thing was used to happen last year. Didn't want spend one.
Right.
Spend ones, but that's the case. So, I think we're looking at trust, you have, you have, you would have a better understanding. What would we call that? Me and me abuses? What? Let breakfast abuses. I mean, that's certainly the.
Airline cry.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah. So, right now, the county ordinance says that short-term rentals are acceptable use in all zoning districts.
Yes.
And that was placed in there in twenty fifteen. Our bylaws, it was changed in two thousand and five, so my question is, when did county ordinance actually place it in their ordinance? Because it seems that our bylaws coincide with whatever the county ordinance does. So, I mean, was that rule put in way back in early two thousand? Not knowing what the implications would be in the future? That's just a question I always had, and I, I can't find the answer on when it originally appeared in the county ordinance. You know, I'm just might want to make, I've been around long enough to know that some of the people that are now complaining about the abuse from the short-term rental. Are the ones that violated the zoning code or the building code before. By adding residences onto their house without permits, you know, an extra wing, or adding another little shed on through a wing, or. Or residence above the garage. The same people that are complaining now are some of the ones that, because it got out of hand. Just a tough nut to crack, and that's, that's what, every few years, we, we hear the complaint, especially when people from downstate come up and abuse a privilege, you know. How do you make people morally stand up to any responsibility? That's a good question. Marcia.
That zoning, then I agree with Airbnb. Rent shirt for my mom, and it was about here. That didn't want any restrictions on short-term rentals. This was before Airbnb, before Verbal Auto. Now, they're dead, we're short-term rentals, I'm in all.
Yeah.
Mike in Bogran, where I've seen a problem that has really developed now, was because of. These companies, these LLCs, they got one in Texas that bought this house in Bogran State. They paid a lot of money for it, but they're doing it across all the state. And they're renting it out everything, and this is one of the ones that's a problem.
You got three LLCs in Corbett Point, and they're trying to buy more property. Yeah. We have developer that. That adds another dimension to the, really. By the way, Marcia's supervisor. Knows what's up, so like.
Well, I've had all these people, Bogran at my last company.
Yeah.
Once more, and that is much time that they can have anybody to come for. I had a deal with that in front for Bogran State. But this was all came out, nobody had said anything, so we decided that we were going to look at the testing ordinance at the township level. Because I've talked to other counties, some of them, they say, no, they don't really have a problem. But I know the ones on the ways, I'm very curious, we are. But again, like I said, I've got, I've got people that have been renting short-term rentals on their homes along the lake for years. It's not been a problem. But they're controlling who they rent to, they're controlling what these people do. Airbnb is where you can go online and make a report saying that, you know. But it's not getting hated.
True. Well, let me stay back, I just asked Marcia because she's a supervisor. Let's stay back to the board right now.
Yeah, that's what you said, I just had a comment about back to the regulations that we had in place, and I'll take the septic systems. You know, for one, and, and as you heard already about all these homes on the lakes, and, you know, they're overloading septic system that we're not. You know, committed to allow for the amount of people that are being allowed in those places, so with violations there, that. I'm wondering, you know, that you couldn't fall back on a sci-fi journey.
So, so how do you police them? Do you do vet checks? Well, I mean, that's what you're down to.
Yeah.
You know, when people, you know, a couple of my rent an inexpensive place on the lake, pretty soon fifteen or twenty feet will show up. Well, but how do you regulate that? Do you actually infringe on the rights? I don't know. So that's part of the problem we want to do, I just want the public to understand. Well, it's a tough nut. And it's, and it's a way for some of these people who afford a place on the lake, that never were able to afford otherwise. You know, it might use it just a few, few weeks of the year, but running out the rest of the year, and pays for the thing. Now the place, the properties around the water are three, four hundred thousand, even the three quarters of a million, something. Oh, straight. Yeah, keep going, right? So that's kind of where we're at, so. What are we, how do we want to do this? We want to just, so hence the ordinance, I don't think they.
So you said things. I agree well with the solar project, gone from trying to, you know, regulate them from going to state, to also now considering pulling the whole ordinance. So, I, I believe that, you know, to you, unless there's something in writing on, on the particular areas. Or the, you know, subdivisions, that, that, I mean, I, I believe, one of the subdivisions, and I know of, has already written into them, but. But they don't have the resources to take these people to court, to say, you bought this knowing that it's on the title. That you can't.
They got it, the title word.
But.
We'll staff up with the other report, and we go, and also. You have a general framework of, of short-term rentals. At the county level, we, we only regulate planning zoning. So if you need to can, the land, and make an amendment in a planning zoning ordinance. To change the districts, so you'll see that if you do some research, you can allow that, so you can exclude them in residential districts. You can require them in certain areas. But with that being said, the, under planning zoning, if you adopt an ordinance, whether it's tomorrow or next week, or, or two years from now. Everything prior to that date is grandpa or dead, under, under zone ordinance. So what you see, so what you see. Please let me continue. Under local jurisdiction, communities, villages, and townships, they have general police power, so they pass ordinances. That regulate licensing standards. The licensing standards, you can set the number, you can set the location with your planning zoning, and you can regulate it that way. That takes out the grandpa's provisions. So zoning and ordinances are two different things, it would take a combined approach to make, if you want to regulate that. Combined approach between townships and the counties. So we probably will get something in the discussion, which, which units are looking for regulation? If they're willing to adopt those ordinances and partner with some kind of enforcement mechanisms. And if you have, be prepared, if you want enforcement, to pay for that enforcement, at the end of the day, it's make that work. That can take partnership, and this is, you know, a report we'll put together, we'll have legal counsel provide all the detailed information, but. The discussions on short-term rentals have been around a long time. The intensity, obviously, is showing up in communities, and these are the types of conversations you have to have. Know what the landscape is, and your option, and try to work forward. Try to develop a policy around, we take the partnership to make that work at a level of, if you're trying to regulate the number. And also control what takes place on property, you have to have that, that complete package out there. Okay, and staff's coming, okay, thank you. Send answer to the question. Any other, while we're at it, any other board comments? We need to have a village appropriation meeting sometime in the next two weeks, couple weeks. Kathy, you got some suggestions?
We'll know the day and time, and I'll see if we get the room. Looking for a morning. This and those, Mr. Osman, Mr. Eustace, and yourself.
It's a view. I can reach that, I'll be there. All right. Okay, let's make it a Wednesday, Wednesday morning.
Which day?
September third. Is that too quick?
Room is. This room is nine to five is front of the court.
Okay, we can use Jeff's office.
I'll do that.
He can come in late that day.
At what time is on?
So the third, nine o'clock, here. That's what we, that's what we're all. It's not mine. There it is, September, boy, summer went, didn't it? Thank you, Kathy, for that. Okay, anything else we should talk about?
Citizens comment, or, or the only comments.
Yeah. Anything else the board should talk about? Okay, public comments once again. Same thing applies, Jane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Town Trice, eight five eight three four. I've poured me a pint. When I came here this morning, I prepared these remarks, I had no idea anybody else here thought, I'm not sure if they're paying for it. I'm glad that we're talking about these. We've got businesses operating in our, in our areas, they're, you know, I think the, the comment was mini hotels. And, you know, I, I understand people do this so they can afford the house on the lake. But man, I worked my ass off my entire life to be able to afford it without a coordinate. And it's not, it's not a short-term rental, it's my home. You know, please, please look at it that way, we've got a lot more people that live up there right now, because these places come up for sale. These LLCs, these developers, they're picking these babies off left and right with cash, with cash. And they're coming from Texas, they're coming from Ohio, we just had a lady from Ohio, we're looking at our restrictions right now to, to eliminate them in there as well. But we're the lowest form of government that you can give when you're a homeowners association, so. We need, we need some help, we need some help from the township as well, the township is just taking hands off, approached and sold, eh? So, and all they tell us is we have to go to the county. So, please help us out, get the, get these businesses out of the rest of the town. And if it takes changing ordinance one forty-seven and ordinance two hundred, I mean, you're talking about doing that with the, with the solar panels? Please help us out, let's get back to, let's get back to what we worked our, our lives for, to, to get back, and I understand, I understand, and. Let me, let me, let me volunteer to say that I'm sure that these people are sitting here would be more than willing to be on a task force and help the county administrator with this. I've been a city manager in several different communities, we saw, I've been in local governance for fifty-eight years, so I know how this stuff works. If there's anything we can do to help, we'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, for your input. What's your name, Mr.?
Uh, Louis Vannas, Grand Township, see where you go this. Um, well, I'm a short-term rental, be, uh. He's here, do you think there are, uh, only economic development person is steering us on that? Because, uh, uh. We look at cities like Alpena, Toski, Jaler, Carver City. You know, the cities of, you know, incredible size. We only have one name branded hotel in our city, that's Westin Brothers Street. Uh, Alpena has opened five hotels in the past year. Where is Chauigan? Chauigan is still stuck in reverse, going down into the ditch, like, 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 tight, 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 and. I mean, you know, uh, we have all this land in the city of Chauigan. That is setting, uh, undeveloped. Uh, being, not being able, you know, to be used. And we can get the likes of the Jerry Lovelands of Macam City, the, the Layos of Macam City, the, you know, some of the. Prominent business owners here in town, to give us the Hiltons, the Hyatts, the, you know, the other best westerns, the. The Choice Hotels, stuff like that, we can increase our hotel stock here in the city of Chauigan. Any, any river, any river does not have a name brand hotel there. Uh, we can, um, you know, increase our hotel stock here in the, in the city of Chauigan. I mean, you know, we're supposed to eventually get a cruise line, you know, uh, you know, docking here in Chauigan. You know, they're gonna, they're not gonna come here because we only have, uh, you know, we don't have the, uh, you know. The, the resources for it. I mean, our reasonable right, the last right of the day is for, for competing in the afternoon. I mean, you know, we're supposed to be looking at increasing our services with that. I mean, this is the overall behavior and mentality of our leaders here that are not. Getting Chauigan out of the, the depths of the Atlantic Ocean, and in the Titanic, uh, uh, cirque. We need Chauigan to get, get us head out of the river and grow.
Okay, Louis.
These VRB, VRBOs should be kicked out of here.
Thank you.
Uh, Brian Felling, eighty-three, fifty-one Corbett Trail, from Corbett Point. Just the last thing I wanted to reiterate about the, the short-term rentals is that, like, for us, we're an association, we're a member community. But, you know, we have companies coming in buying up, you know, houses and trying to turn it into what I would call a resort community, so like. Drive Out Tours, Roger City, the Manitou Estates is a resort community. I think an option for zoning is creating. Resort community areas, and that's where all the Airbnb's and hotels and everything could be. I mean, it's just a suggest, but, but back to, I'm sure you guys are a member only community too, we're a member only community. And again, the short-term rentals is a nigma that's happening around the country, and we're stuck in the middle. So that's why we're looking for this help. And, and again, like Tom said, there's a lot of us here who've got a lot of experience working on committees, I'm retired Navy, worked for the feds. I, I'm available, I'm retired, I'm sixty-three and retired, I got plenty of time, so.
And good to, good to hear.
Morning, Ed Gennott, thirteen seventy-two Nicolay.
I am.
States. Want to add, and I think a lot of the individuals did a nice job bringing up the points that we want to make, but I'd also like to add, um. Being in this community for a long time, you know, school administrator, and having a lot of pride and sense in our community. Well, I think they have the same kind of pride and sense in our neighborhoods. And I can't speak for, not generalities, or there's someone that's from Texas that owns a house a couple doors down from us, and there's trash out all week. The septic systems have been worked on three times this, since June. Residential houses that might be made for five or six people, have twelve people. There's six cars parked there, and just, just a lot of things that every two, three, five days, there's someone new in there. And it doesn't have the sense of community and pride that, that I think that we have. And I think that's one of the biggest things, is that it's someone from another area who won't even return information or, or certified mail. But I, but I do, you know, want to leave you with, I, I really appreciate the concern that I see, because I like, um, being in education, I always look at. The people speaking, and, and I really see a lot of concern, and I think ten years ago, when we had a meeting, there was not that. And, and it wasn't the Airbnb, and I think as we learn and grow and do things with, how do we best handle all these things, I think. Coming up with the solutions, I think that's what we have to do, but I really appreciate your body language and how you're receptive to these things, because these are things that are very. Your body language and how you're receptive to these things, because these are things that are very important, and that's why I go back to perspective. And this was right next door to you all the time where the trash is out, there's a lot of people, it's new people every two, three, four days. Um, it makes a big difference in, in, in your community and your pride, and I, I, I just wanna leave you with that. And I thank you again for your, for listening, because I really feel like you are listening. So thank you.
Thank you.
We have two in our subdivision.
Tyrese, your name again?
Yeah, Pymoral.
Thank you.
We have two in our subdivision back to back on the water. Uh, Renee was here earlier speaking, she's the one that's been having all the trespassing issues. And there's a fourth one right now for sale. Um, what we heard was Detroit, we're not sure if it's a resident or what their intent is. Um, Commissioner Newman knows that the one across the street from there, their first offer was an Airbnb. Uh, they declined that, and we thank them so much for doing that. Um, we don't have homes right now for the people that wanna move here, it's a northern Michigan crabble. And I heard somebody say the other day that it's the wild, wild north. Come up north, there's no enforcement, there's no rules, just buy. And when somebody has listed a house, say for fifty thousand dollars. These people are coming in for ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars more because it's an investment for them. To me, in my eyes, that's commercial, it's not residential. They speed, their dogs are loose, their waste is on your yard. They have no respect for young children or your grandchildren in the subdivision, which is fairly close. It's not, you know, houses sitting back, you're talking a residential platted subdivision. And I really, really hope. Um, and Marcia had meant to, or mentioned to, that some of these have been in the area for a while. Well, it hit home, and these two are just new, did summer to us, that's why we just came. To Bogran Township's meeting, and it's spreading fast. We have no one that can move here, no one to find, um, residential housing. Um, we're willing in our subdivision to do long-term rental. Um, we're considering a year plus, so we know our neighbors, we know who they are. Um, I even went to Jerry Malloy, and he said, these people.
Titan Covenant.
Correct. And he said, these people are given our Bogran Township covenant, protective covenants. He's told, have you read it? Do you understand it? And they still sign on the dotted line. And I don't feel that these two homes should be grandfathered down. They knew what they were signing when they bought that house. My personal opinion, and it's shame on them for not reading it.
Thank you, Jesse.
Don Towne, Grant Township, I wanna thank you also too, for your comments about the solar project, I appreciate your concern. Um, I, I know, thank you, Commissioner Olson, for being in that client, the planning commission, and asking about the enforcement. But it seemed like that kinda died and got into the short-term rental side of it, so I would like to. Understand and know that you're going to be addressing some of these enforcement issues on this solar project. Um, I also met with Cam Cavett. And wanted to understand, you know, and get his perspective on it, um, he was pretty much silent on the whole. Subject, but what he did tell me is that he recently sold a property in Grant Township. Uh, this solar project was on the title, so. Our property values are gonna just plummet, and so, um, I, you know, what's gonna happen with that? Are we gonna see that decrease on our property taxes because of this? You know, I, I'd like that to be addressed, and, um, I, I did have the opportunity to speak to an attorney. And what I was told is that the state does not want these projects approved at the state level. Because they want the local government to be responsible for the cleanup and the toxicity. And the land that, that it's gonna happen, and so that's why they, they don't wanna go to the state, the state doesn't want it. So, I just wanted to end that, thank you.
Anyone else send, uh, the citizens comments? Thank you all for coming today. It's, it's time for the board to go into the, this, I see.